Select Board Meeting of September the 8th, 2020, at this time. The first item on our agenda is a request for appointment by Peg Blackwell to the Conservation Commission. Ms. Blackwell, would you like to have a seat?
This is sir.
That's a good place. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
If you could maybe just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interests.
Sure, I think that you have my application in front of you, which pretty much summarizes that I have been on CONCOM before, and due to the Conflict of Interest law, where I was also working downstairs with CONCOM, I regretfully resigned the commission to avoid any conflict of interest. So I have worked with two agents, two of the conservation agents, and conservation is incredibly important to this town. And we are more than 50%, well, since when we talk to, let's say approximately 50% wetlands. And protecting our wetlands is primed to maintaining the character that we all love in Carver. And I would like to be of service to the community and help in that endeavor.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have a motion and a second for discussion? Sorry?
I'll make a motion. We approve the discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Do the board members have any questions for Ms. Blackwell?
How you doing?
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, sir.
So what we have is on this application, it just says "C" attached, and we don't have that attachment. Can you just let us know what was...
That was emailed to us, actually.
Yeah, well, it's not here with me.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's too bad.
Can you just give me a heads up on that?
Sure, well, as I said, I had worked with CONCOM. I work with two agents. So I'm very familiar with the Carbon Wetlands Protection Bylaw, which does exceed what Mass DEP requires for wetlands. I'm familiar with many of the rules and regs of DEP, having worked with them for well over 10 years, aware of many of the things that have happened in this town, and the decisions that have been made and why they've been made. What I like about our commission is we're a very friendly commission. I don't think anyone has ever been refused. There may be times when we need to tweak their request a little bit, so it's in compliance with rules and regs and the Carbon Wetlands Protection Bylaw. But we always work with the petitioner to come up with something which is mutually agreeable and falls within what needs to be done to protect wetlands.
And my last question here is, do you believe solar should be on top of cranberry bogs and wetlands?
That's a tough question. And I did request from Brook the new rules and regs which have come out from DEP and read through them. I know that in some cases, they are not on top of the bogs, but they are on adjacent farmland, so that they are allowed to keep it as such. I was there when the first one was put in over in Mike Paddux, and we went through that one. And I know since then it's been revised. And I would be interested to read up more on how some of those revisions were done and what the plans are going forward. And how long are they going to be solar? How long do our solar panels last? What happens when the solar panels run out? It's still in ag land, so it could, I think ideally, be converted back to cranberry bog, should the business require it. But as it stands now, we're not losing open space, so we're maintaining open space and we are doing a renewable form of energy, because the majority of them are selling back to the grid.
Thank you.
And if I could just interject real quickly, Peg, you, I know this, but I'd like for you to tell the board. You served as the administrative assistant for two agents, but you, at one point, you were also on the commission previously.
Correct, and then regretfully resigned because it was, once the Conflict of Interest law went in, it was a possibility it could be construed as a conflict of interest and not wanting to put anyone in that position. I regretfully resigned the commission, but still continue to work downstairs.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
You said that you were proud the commission really had never said no and had worked with petitioners to try to reach their goals. But how much are you willing to try to, I don't want to say bend, but work with them to make it work as opposed to uphold the bylaw completely and completely...
Oh, the uplaw, oh, no, bylaw comes first, especially because we have the Carbon Wetlands Protection Bylaw, which exceeds the state. We go, you know, we go 100 as opposed to 65. So no, it definitely has to be within. But a lot of people don't understand that, and even some of the engineers you get don't always follow as carefully as they should. So you can say to them, "All right, fine, you want your house here, but you're going to be 100 feet. So therefore, if we turn it this way," or "You can move it that way," you can do it. So usually, you're able to work within certain parameters and stay within the law and also keep the petitioner happy.
Will you try to look at the variance and grant it based on a petitioner's desire or based on a true hardship?
Only on a true hardship. And you've got some people where these houses were built way back when, for example, and you've got to put in a septic and you've only got so much room. So we will try to do whatever we can to make it fit. And yes, variances are, but reluctantly, shall we say, only if it's a true hardship are they issued.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Belvin?
Are you on any other board or committee within the town right now?
I am on HDC, Historical, Historicalistic Commission, yes, which I don't think would be a conflict of interest in any way. I do serve as a library trustee, but that's an elected position, which doesn't really conflict with anything else.
Thank you.
But I agree, you're right. You don't want to be spread too thin.
Anyone else? Okay. That being said, we have a motion and a second on the table to appoint Peg Blackwell to the Conservation Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Do you unanimous vote?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good for serving.
Thank you for service. Next item on the agenda is Chapter 61A Notice of Intent to Convert. AD Makepeace Company Assessors Map 1-7, Parcels 1-4 off Wenham Road. And we have someone here representing AD Makepeace?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could come forward. Just tell us a bit about what this is being converted to.
Good evening. My name is Tom Melahan. I'm the proponent with Renewable Energy Development Partners.
You can take that off if you want. I mean, if you're comfortable taking it off. Since you're far away from Jim.
I'm not comfortable without it, trust me. I'm Tom Melahan. I'm the project proponent.
Speak Ray into the mic so the folks at home can hear you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm Tom Melahan. I'm the project proponent. I'm with a company called Renewable Energy Development Partners. And we have a project permitted on AD Makepeace land between Wenham Road and South Meadow Road. And it's a twofold project. Part of it is over an agricultural canal, and part of it is a dual-use ag project on an upland piece of property that they have. So we're converting roughly 22 acres from ag use to solar use. And so we've requested the domain be taken out of Chapter 61. We've got our Conservation Commission permits and our planning board approval. And we're itching to get started on the construction of the project.
And you say that this project is, the solar project is proposed to occur in uplands?
Well, part of it, part of the project, there's roughly six acres of it, which is a dual-use ag project. And so we're, it's a, it's a, on upland. And we're converting, it's a forested upland that we're converting to farmland. And so we're holding the panels 10 feet off the ground. And the panels rotate with the sun, and we're farming underneath the panels. That's the same, we have another project like that, a 12-acre site off of Gate Street that we're, it's under construction right now. So that's our second project that's of a dual-use nature. They're both in uplands. And to our knowledge, they're the two first larger-scale agricultural dual-use projects in the state. So we're kind of happy about that. That, that's kind of a normal project, if you will. The second half of the project is an agricultural canopy. So it's a canal, AD Makepeace has a canal in that, in that property. They have about 650 acres in there. And there is a canal system that runs through it that's about a mile and a half long. And we're putting a canopy over the canal. The canal is about 33 feet wide. And we're putting, you know, you'll see solar and carports over, over the parking lots. This is the same type of thing, only we're putting it, you know, there's piles on each side of the canal, and the solar goes over the canal. So the idea being that you don't have to clear trees to do it, and it's, it's like a dual use. So the landowner can't do anything with that land that's over the agricultural canal. And the agricultural canal is going to stay there forever.
And continue to be used.
And continue to be used. So this is, it's built over the canal, and it's built high enough over the canal so that the landowner can still get in and do their ditch maintenance that they typically do every five to 10 years or whatever. And the project's all kind of wired together, and it comes to a point of interconnection. There's an existing electrical line that runs directly from the West Pond Substation in Plymouth, and it feeds the town, basically the whole town of Carver. And we've kind of tapped into that, so it's a good, solid point of interconnection. And this project's tucked back really away from most of Butters. And where we did have some butter concerns, we've proposed screening that would shape, you know, keep the project, people from being able to see the project.
That's great. Thank you. So for the board members, we are being asked whether or not we want, the town wants to exercise our right of first refusal to purchase this property. We have asked, always these notices go to the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, the Board of Assessors, and the Select Board. And we ask the people in charge of those other three departments to let us know whether they're recommending that the town purchase the property. And I'm not sure if it's in this packet, but it was in our email that they recommended that we not exercise our right of first refusal. So it's just informational for you. So do we have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion that we not, I'm sorry, that we do purchase the property. I think it's an opportunity for us to go to the Conservation Commission and ask them to utilize some of their funds to protect property from solar development. And this could be just the start of it, that it's just over the waterway, but could come back again and say, "Well, we want to do it on top of the cranberry bogs, expand it on the cranberry bogs." Without that being on the books of saying, "We're not, don't imply on doing that. It's not going to be done." And that we have that in writing, that it's not going to be done forever. And I think we should purchase the property.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. So in order to purchase the property, we would have to have the funds to do that. And I don't know if you, representing the applicant, would have any idea what that price might be?
I don't. Sorry, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how the town would value the property. It's a, it's not a regular piece of property. What's being taken out of Chapter 61 is, there's kind of, there's an eight-acre piece that's kind of regularly shaped. And then the rest of it is kind of long, linear over the canal. And there's some access easements that are included in what we're removing from Chapter 61. So I don't know how you would value, it's kind of like a long string that's 30 feet wide that, over a canal. Offhand, I don't know how you would value that, to be honest.
Mr. Lufan, do you have any thoughts?
Well, we'd obviously have to get an appraiser out there ASAP, as there's only so much time to exercise your right. But there's also some requirement, obviously, to be prepared to exercise and execute the, you know, the transaction too. So I'd have to look and see what the timeframe for that would be.
I'm sorry, which transaction?
Well, there's always, there's some limitation on the transaction of actually purchasing the property. You can't just vote to do it and then have it out there for, you know, an undefined period of time. There has to be some execution of that.
Correct. Okay, thank you. So there is a motion and a second on the table? Any further discussion, Mr. Belvin?
One of the other things that I kind of, kind of hurts me a little bit, and I don't know if there's a formality issue, but they've already went to conservation, they already went to planning, and then it's coming to us at this point. I think personally that that's backwards. They should be coming to us first to ask for that before they go somewhere else, to another board or committee to find out if it's doable, because we could come into this issue of, if we want to purchase the property, then it gives us the opportunity to do that at that point. So I think something should be put in order for that for future. But right now, I think this is an opportunity that the Conservation Commission does have money, if they're willing to give it up, to purchase this property, and we can go into negotiations for it. I think it'd be a good thing for our town. Thank you.
So on that note, Mr. Belvin, I do want to point out that one of the ways the town becomes informed as to whether the various department heads involved think that we should purchase it is for them to put their heads together. I don't believe the applicant is going to them formally in front of the commission. These are, these are forms that have been in place for a long time in Town Hall, where Conservation Agent, Planning Director, and the head of the assessing lets us know whether, in their opinion, they would recommend that we exercise our right of first refusal. So that's not a, I don't think they were, I don't think it's backwards, in other words. I think we need that input from them. That's just my, we each have a different opinion on it. But that's my take on it. That has been in place for many, many years, where, you know, conceivably, nobody up here knows anything about conservation or planning. We're lucky. We have some people here who do, but not every Select Board will. And so we need that input from those department heads. And just so you know, I don't think we were being slated, is what I'm trying to say.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the process appears to be not the best process for it, because we should have that ability as the Board of Selectmen to, if we're not going to do it, then it gives them a better handle when they go to planning and conservation, saying, "The town doesn't want it." But now he's already been to planning and conservation, all right? Spend that money and that time.
No, they haven't been in front of the boards.
He said it's his permanent.
Have you been in front of the boards?
Yes, we have.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I misunderstood. I beg your pardon.
That's, that's why I'm saying this.
I think you have a good point. Okay, there's a motion. Yes, Mrs. Bogart?
I just, I agree with everything that you've said, and I hadn't even thought of that. They're coming to us with a project. So at this point, in my opinion, it almost makes us look like, if we were to decide to buy the land, we would be saying no to the project, where, where our intentions would be to protect the land. And as we heard Ms. Blackwell say, about half of our town is open space. And in my opinion, I would love to see the board and the town do as much as we can to protect every little bit of open space that we can, with whatever funds we have, other mechanisms, and without knowing a purchase price. How do you say no to something that you don't know how much it costs? So I would, I would like to see us buy it or at least hold off until we have more information.
Just a minor correction, if I may, though. I think Ms. Blackwell said, I know Ms. Blackwell said half the town is actually wetlands.
Okay.
Most of the town is unprotected open space. I don't know that percentage, but it's pretty big.
This would give us an opportunity to protect them.
You've got the right idea. Mr. Townsend?
Madam Chair, thank you. I don't see how we can act on Ms. Belvin's motion one way or another until we know what the cost of the property is. So I don't, I don't see how we can act on it at all till we know what the purchase price is.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Well, we do have a motion and a second. Mr. Hoffman?
I have a question as well. So the conservation is already recommended not to purchase to...
The Conservation Agent, yes. We have seen that document. That was emailed to us. I don't know if it's here in this packet. The Planning Director also signed that. And I know it also goes to the Board of Assessors. So in the opinion of those three department heads, they're recommending we not purchase it. But, you know, that's, that's just their opinion. Now, I didn't hear the applicant correctly, and Bob is right. They did already go through the permitting process, which I now realize, so. And that's not typical, I don't think. I think typically, they go through this, this process, the right of first refusal first, before they go into a long permitting process. That's my understanding.
So I guess I'm a little confused, is why would we want to have the town buy the property? It's a, it's a cranberry bog, correct, in the canal?
It's a piece of, it's a piece of upland adjacent to cranberry bogs and a long, linear canal. It's about 3,500 feet of canal. That's about 30 feet wide, that runs, you know, north-south through, through the cranberry bog complex.
I'm just thinking of the economic impact on the town that if we purchased it versus having solar and keep, leave it the way it is as far as tax-wise, how that would, negative or positive, to the town, us purchasing versus refusing to purchase it.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Rick? The tax impact?
Well, I think it's not so much the pro-tax. I mean, there'll be some, presumably, payment of taxes, which does have some value. I think it's one of those philosophical issues in terms of how much of its cost avoidance versus how much revenue the town could get from the town if the land were converted for other purposes.
Mr. Townsend?
I'm just sorry, just one final thought. I think if we were going to buy it, before we were to spend our money on it, I'd like to see some plan of what we were going to do with it. Because there's only so much money we have to buy conservation lands. And when we do spend that money, I'd like it to be for land that we can use in some way to benefit the town. And I'm not sure what, in what way the town could use this particular land other than to just leave it as open space, so just one final thought.
Thank you for that. And I do want to remind people that the Conservation Land Trust Fund money, which was established back in, I think it was 2002, is for the purpose of purchasing land. However, at the time, especially when we first started that fund with $20,000, we knew we would never be able to buy a piece of property. And very shortly after that, I think properties started skyrocketing. $100,000 just for a house lot, never mind with the house on it. So that money was meant to be used for all those other pertinent purchasing things that you have to do. You have to do, get three appraisals, you have to, you know, do a title search. You have, all this other stuff costs money. So that's, and again, there's $600,000 in there. I'm just stating that I'm not sure how much of this we could actually purchase with that money. We could certainly use that money to, to find out all those things we need to know in order to purchase it.
No, and I think that's, that's obviously the challenge, is without knowing exactly what we're talking about, we've got to deal with whatever the time constraint is. It's very possible we'd have to, again, put together some financing package, whether it's, you know, looking at the Capital Debt Stabilization Fund or trying to find some other funds at Town Meeting, or, you know, depending on the cost, if it's looking at debt exclusion. I think the challenge of putting those pieces together in a limited period of time, that, again, that could be difficult. That being said, whatever the board's wishes, that's what we shall pursue.
Mrs. Bogart?
Kind of in life, you don't buy something without seeing it. And I know from, from Jim and my experience on the planning board, we did a lot of site visits. So would the board find it valuable to do a site visit for this property to kind of address your concern of what would we use it for? So before we say yea or nay, see what the property is and find out how much it would cost?
Well, there is a motion on the table in a second.
Okay.
If you want to withdraw that, I mean, I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just saying there's a motion and a second, so at this point, we need to vote. But if the board would prefer to not vote, I mean, we have, we have a certain time constraint here. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, there are certain time constraints around exercising the option. I'm not an expert in the subject, to be honest with you.
Well, I think we have 30 days from when we are notified. I don't know precisely when we were notified, so I don't know when that 30 days is up. Mr. Hoffman?
The thing that concerns me with this vote, I don't want this to be an anti-solar vote, that we just don't want solar on this land, so that's why we should buy it. This is a project I believe we looked at when we were on the planning board. The canopy with the, with the solar going.
The address on that wasn't Wenham, though.
Yes, it is. It's off Wenham Road.
Yeah, it's just the other side.
This is when we were on the planning board.
Yes, I think you both were on the planning board.
So, Mr. Belvin?
I'm sorry. If both of you guys were on the planning board for this project, then do you have to recuse yourselves from this because you were already voted in favor of it with this?
It's up to them. We can't tell them whether they have to recuse themselves. That's their, that's their decision.
I don't believe so. Correct me if I'm wrong, but...
This is, we're not voting on the solar project. We're voting on whether or not we should buy the...
Yeah, it's a different vote. It is a different vote. Mr. Lufan?
Yes.
We have, some members of the board would like to do a site walk and hold off on this vote. But there's been a motion and a second. My understanding is we actually have to take a vote unless that...
Unless that vote is, motion is withdrawn.
Withdrawn, okay.
Of course, then you would perhaps accept other motions, but unless the motion...
I'll withdraw my motion.
I guess I'll make a motion to wait on this until we at least have a purchase price and consider setting a site visit, but until we know a fair purchase price. So maybe by the next meeting?
Well, we're not sure when the next meeting is going to be. And, Mr. Lufan, how much time do we actually have to make this decision about whether to exercise our right of first refusal?
It's 120 days.
120, okay. I don't know where I got 30 from. Anyway, so how many days do we have left?
We're about, we're about 30 days into that.
That's where I got the 30 from.
Correct. We're about 30 days into that.
Okay, so then I would make a motion to hold off on a decision until we have more information that could involve a purchase price and/or a site visit.
I'd like to do a site visit, too. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jim? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. No? Okay. Yeah, I'm a no too, but for very complicated reasons. All right, so, but the motion passes 3 to 2? Not to... Not to move on this exercising our right of first refusal tonight until we find out about a purchase price and do a site visit. Was that the motion in a second?
So the motion, I'm sorry.
I think I'm confused on the motion, too. Can you, can you read back what the motion was?
Are you, are you making a motion to table this entire discussion?
To hold off on waiting, making a decision to purchase or not until we have more information, including the purchase price and/or taking a site visit.
So you just want to table this to a future meeting?
Yes.
If that, yeah.
So that passed, that passed 3 to 2?
It did.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for your time.
We hope it's not too confusing.
Oh, question. Who will work with the applicant on setting up a site visit?
We will work, we will work with him, between me and Rick and Elaine. Will you stay in contact with us? Do you have emails?
Yes, you should have my contact information.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to vote to ratify the vote to approve the state primary election warrant taken on 8/21/2020. And before we do this, I just want to remind people, or in the public, people may not know, we had met at 8:00 AM that morning. It was a very quick vote. It was over in one minute. And then Mrs. Bogart came and joined the meeting, but she had been locked down. And so we were really, we held a, you know, a second vote. And so we were really, we, we held a, you know, a second vote. We wanted to make sure that we were doing everything correctly, and it's been suggested to us that we simply ratify that second vote, where we were all present, and we all voted to, um, to approve the state primary election warrant. So I will entertain a motion to ratify the vote to approve the state primary election warrant, taken on eight twenty-one, twenty twenty.
I'm going to ratify the vote.
Whoops. Okay, one of you has to second it.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Bogart?
No.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought you were gonna say-
I'm here.
Okay, you are. All right. Uh, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're all opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And now, um, we're going to try to set the date for fall special town meeting. I think, Rick, you have talked to town council?
Yeah, you skipped, you skipped the, uh-
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did. Okay, so the next item is a discussion about possible open meeting law violation among select board members.
Yes, and I did look into this, uh, as requested. And I've distributed to you a copy of that email, as was recommended by town council. And the data that the email from Sarah to the rest of the board was September third. And the question it, uh, was whether or not this may constitute a potential open meeting law violation. And the council has advised that, without opining specifically on whether or not this was, because ultimately, it's a decision of the Attorney General, not town council. But he did in, inform me that if he, if there was, you know, uh, somebody had sent a violation or proposed violation, or an allegation to the Attorney General, that it's, it's very possible that the AG may indeed find this to be a violation, as the AG tends to, uh, you know, monitor these things and define them very strictly. However, if the AG, um, did find that to be the case, the AG would, would require a public disclosure, which is what we're doing tonight, um, that the board discuss this tonight. Uh, and doing so in itself, and attaching this to the minutes, would remedy any potential violation anyway, so. So I think, uh, by doing that tonight, you essentially remedy any concerns about that. That being said, not to segue too much, uh, is that, uh, one of the things that Mr. Hoffman has requested is that we do a, a forum on the open meeting law, and council has told me that he'd be happy to schedule that at our convenience, so. So, separate and aside, but still, in a, in a sense, related to this, so. So unless, so whatever discussion the board may have, if, if you require any discussion, I think, um, the fact that we're talking about it now does mitigate any, any concerns here.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. LeFond. Um, so, Mr. Belvin, because this was a, um, concern specifically that you brought up, um, would you like to point out exactly where you felt, what part of it you felt was the violation?
So I, I want people to understand that, um, with the open meeting law, it has some requirements, that things that we can't do when we send an email to all the members. There's certain things we can, and certain things we can't do. One of the things that is big with the Attorney General's office is, don't give an opinion during your discussion, whatever you do. If you're gonna send stuff out to the different selectmen, um, make sure it's just the facts and no opinion, um, having to do with agenda items or whatnot, uh, that come before us. This was an email about the bills payable, uh, who's gonna sign it, who doesn't have to sign it. And there was one paragraph here that says, uh, from Sarah to all of us is, "I believe that's where we stood, that a quorum was needed to sign the warrants, until a couple of weeks ago, when I noticed one of our officers has take this, take these warrants with only my signature on them, as the chair, down to Meg's office." I don't know when the change occurred. All right, that's the next paragraph. So my feeling is, as soon as she said, "I believe," that's her opinion, saying, "This is what I believe is supposed to happen," which is an opinion in my opinion, just my only old opinion. That's why I, um, sent an email to Sarah to let her know, hey, um, this could be an open meeting law violation, and, and also to say, this is how we can remedy it, um, by doing, just what we're doing tonight, is to bring it up to the public and let them know. And it's just a, the big thing is, we have to be careful when, as Board of Selectmen members, that we're not talking to a quorum, which is three members, about a certain issue under our control. And that's where this comes out. So I just want to make it clear that I feel that when Sarah writes, "I believe," and she sends it to all of us, is that's her opinion.
Okay.
And that's why.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. So, so let me, um, just throw in my two cents. So I do want everyone to understand why I sent this email. My goal was, of course, to do good. It was in the interest of transparency, so you all would know what was going on up here. I sent it as soon as I realized that I was the only one signing the warrants. I, I was unaware that that was happening, and I wanted to include everybody, so everyone knew what was going on. And I think, although I think it's really good that we're doing this here, and I'm, I'm glad that was your, uh, advice, Mr. LeFond, so we could remedy this, this, it, potential situation. I also want to point out that the word I actually used was past tense. So I said, "I believed," that this was, how, how do I phrase it? "I believed that's where we still stood." So I'm making, I'm discussing a recollection, a memory of a protocol. I'm not saying what I think now, or what I thought while I was writing this email, but I believed that in the past, for a really long time, that we needed a, three people to sign. So to me, it was not an expression of my opinion, and it certainly was not asking any of you to opine on this, or any of us to take, to do anything. So that's my, that's my take on it. But I'm, I'm actually really glad we brought this up. I think it's good for the public to see us having this kind of a discussion.
And if I could just comment briefly, uh, number one, uh, in fairness to Mr. Belvin, Mr. Belvin didn't make an allegation. He was simply-
Oh, no, no, I, I know that. No, I, absolutely. No, he did it very nicely, and I appreciate that.
The other thing, you know, on the agenda, right after a town meeting, town council did suggest that we add that to the agenda, so the question you raised can be answered. But what the answer from Mr. Corbo is that pursuant to the, uh, twenty sixteen Municipal Modernization Act, that, uh, the chair, E. Four Vice Chair, um, is authorized on behalf of the board to sign one. So that's probably what, what you've been operating on?
That, yeah.
Yes.
Apparently.
Just to clear that up.
No, it's good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Okay. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Anyone? Okay, thank you all very much. And now I guess we're ready to set the date for the fall special town meeting. Mr. LeFond, do you have some dates?
Yes. Um, I did check with town council, having met with, uh, Finance Director and the Chairman of the Finance Committee. We did discuss possible dates, uh, October thirteenth, which was one of the dates we had hoped council may be available, as well as Thursday, the fifteenth. Now, we don't tend to have town meetings on Thursdays. No reason we can't. The other date, two dates that council is available is Tuesday, the sixth, Tuesday, the twentieth. I think the sixth may be a little bit too tight.
Tuesday, the sixth of October?
Correct.
Oh.
And I know the twentieth is getting a little bit later than Meg would have liked, but based upon, you know, having the fact that the board has to, you know, ultimately vote to set a warrant, Finance Committee has to take some action on that warrant, as minimal as it probably will be, um, I do believe, and Meg may not be happy with me, but at this point, I believe recommending that October twentieth makes the most sense.
Okay.
And don't tell Meg I said that.
Of course not. No, no, this is just on TV. Um, and so what day of the week is that?
That's a Tuesday night.
Oh, Tuesday, okay. Thank you, Mr. LeFond. Um, do we have a motion and a second to set the fall town meeting for Tuesday, October twentieth?
I'll make that motion October twentieth for a town meeting.
Second.
Second, Mark. Thank you. Um, any discussion?
I have one.
Mr. Belvin?
Does this give enough time if somebody wanted to do a petition article, um, for a special town meeting? The office committee, too?
Yes. Special town meeting has to be posted fourteen days in advance of the meeting, so there would be sufficient time-
Okay.
-in that of the case. Do you have a suggestion? Elaine has suggested that we set a date, a deadline for submission of articles.
Okay, and-
Do you have a suggestion, Elaine? Seeing where Elaine has to do most of this administrative work.
Right.
Do you have a suggested date?
Yes, Elaine, give us a suggested date, if you don't mind.
She's not getting away unscathed tonight. Okay. September thirtieth?
So September thirtieth for-
Right.
Submission of petition articles?
No, no, for, for all articles.
Of all articles, okay.
Articles for thirty.
And that being said, uh, just, uh, petition articles, if, if they're submitted, they must go on the warrant, but they still have to be submitted within the timeframe of the board sending a, a due date.
Okay.
Three weeks.
So that, that, uh, September thirtieth deadline is for all articles, including petition articles?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to have our special fall town meeting on October the twentieth, with a deadline of September the thirtieth for submission of all articles, including-
I'll make, I'll make that my revised motion.
Thank you.
And if you could maybe add seven o'clock?
At, at seven PM?
Yes.
At seven PM?
Traditional time of, uh, town meeting.
Okay. Okay, so Bob has made the, um, amended motion, and Mark, you seconded that?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
All opposed. Passes unanimously.
And before we adjourn, could I just say two quick things? Number one, as you know, by, by what's listed specifically on the agenda, we have had some concerns of, uh, COVID testing. Um, as of right now, there's no, there is no reason to believe there's anybody who's in this building who works here, or any guests who have had any exposure. We are being hyper-sensitive, though. Um, all the built town buildings, um, all of them, I should say all, the non-school buildings, that we will be having those serviced by a professional, uh, ser- serve pro in the next couple of days. In the meantime, our council and agent will not, until that's done, the COA discussed that should, should not open because of, obviously, the population they serve.
Yep.
Um, but again, at this time, realistically, we, we, we're very sure, in consultation with the health agent, that we don't have any legitimate concerns, but we, um, we'd rather err on the side of safety, so. And I would also like to thank, uh, Dave Seaton Top and, um, John Woods for their efforts, um, and Elaine for grace under pressure, uh, during most of this morning, so.
Yes, yeah, it was a difficult, uh, difficult morning. And I wanted just to add on that note, I spoke with the Chair of the Board of Health, and he, um, basically said, you know, that this, this was their direction, the, the reason we did all this, trying to keep as few people here as possible, and so on, was, was really, um, you know, their call. So thank you. So, um, Rick, did you want to finish up with the signing the warrants procedure?
Actually, I, I jumped ahead, if you recall-
Oh, that's right, you did.
I was talking about the Municipal Modernization Act, twenty sixteen. So we're doing everything right.
Okay, we are doing everything right, correct. Okay. Seeing nothing further on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay.
To both of them.
Uh, any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.